Okay.
Happy belated birthday.
All right.
Some more of that for you.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order. It is Tuesday, August 26, 2025. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes of reports received and filed?
Yes, I have the collector's July 2025 fees.
Okay. Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Thursday, we got this Perfect Pairing Special Learning Center fundraiser and Monday's a holiday, so if you have anything for the agenda, get that to us sooner than later. It's like Friday.
I'm trying to do that before, but I think that's not it.
Today is a Thursday, Tax Commission meeting at 1:30. Tomorrow, the National Planning Committee is actually in action. Friday, it's a special day. Today is a new day for the assessor's office.
Today, let's see, tonight, Historic City of Jefferson, Thomas Lawson Price Society has a meeting. Thursday, Chamber Conference Call and Special Learning Center, Madison Capital Deposits. That's all I have. Okay. Any commission comments? New business, accounts payable?
I think we're gonna do the jury worker, so I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Make a motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Future city-county cooperative projects and one-half cent sales tax discussion.
All right.
Okay. So just wanted to bring the county commission up to speed on where we're at on all the cooperative projects we've been working on, maybe talk about some future ones upcoming in the next sales tax cycle, and then talk about in general the next sales tax cycle. So a couple, maybe a month ago or so, Kyle Brimmer and I did a joint presentation to the Chamber Transportation Committee, talking about, you know, what we're looking at, you know, upcoming in the sales tax. And we got into a lot of different things with that, but this one, we wanted to just focus on city-county cooperative projects that have been so successful over the 20 years that, you know, at least I've been at the county. And we started that, I don't know if it was 20 years ago, but about 16, 17 years ago, we started doing joint projects with the city, and it's been very successful, and there's several to show around town. But we'll just do a quick review of the current sales tax cycle, the projects that were identified as cooperative. So the Capital Area Rail Terminal, the cart, that's complete. We did the ground ribbon cutting on that earlier this year, and that's been very successful. And while, you know, we're on the cusp of some really good things happening out there, so good project to have done. Wildwood Drive is under construction. You may have noticed, we just opened the roundabout up at Rock Ridge last Friday, so the project's coming along very good. And if you're driving along Edgewood, you can definitely see the new corridor where it's at. It's a very good joint cooperative project, and a nice development and component is coming with that, with the residential development right off of the intersection. Monroe Street reconstruction, that opened about a week and a half ago or so, two weeks ago, I think.
Yes, it's open, and it's nice to have that, have that open finally, and people can stream through there. I know we had some, do a little signal tweaking there, kinda after that, the contractor come back and kinda try to fix the timing of it a little bit, and I think we've got that a little bit better, so.
So that, again, is a good project. A lot of things happening now and coming complete right now, so a lot of good things happening. The High Street Viaduct, that will take a little bit. We know we're about $18 million for the total price tag on that. It's gonna take some additional funding. There's different avenues. The city can go down on that with some different grant opportunities, but that was a project identified in the sales tax, but it's gonna take a little time to get to that point. We don't have a ton of time on that, on that bridge. It is, you know, nearing the end of its life. They are working on the design that is ongoing, but construction will take a little bit until we get the funding identified.
And hopefully that design will help us capture additional, I mean, obviously a big grant or something is gonna be needed for actual construction here, so having the design and kinda being ready to go should hopefully, you know, help us there, because obviously it's needed as Eric said.
Stadium Corridor in West Edgewood, I'll show you a picture on that here in a second. That was actually, we did a study on that probably 10 years ago as a joint cooperative project, and this is actually the engineering for that, and it'll improve the intersections at Stadium, at Edgewood, and then also Creek Trail, and then possibly some other things tying into that. And then Madison Street improvements. This is a project that kinda was developed a little later in the cycle and shifted some money from other projects. Design is starting soon on that, and we have a first phase of construction to be completed next year. I'll show you a little bit about that and how we ended with that project. So the green is what was the original area scoped to improve, some sidewalk ADA improvements, and then pavement improvements, and improving, you know, the major corridor coming into town. It serves a lot of business and also MU Cap Region Health Center there, so a big project, and this'll improve that whole corridor. As we started looking at that and started to realize that, hey, we ought to really address some of the other areas right in and around that, and so the scope for engineering has expanded to include parts of Jefferson Street, possibly parts of Monroe, and then the side roads, and basically clean that whole area up. There's signal improvements needed at the intersection of Jefferson and Madison, and then there's also sidewalk and a lot of things to tie into that as well as the pavement. So that scope will, like I said, increase. The first phase, what's shown in green, is definitely something that will be done next year, but, you know, as parts of the other project are identified, we could do a phased approach to improve that whole area. The purple or the pink there, that's the core, the area of improvement for the Monroe Street project that we just opened up. So as we look into the next sales tax cycle, again, we're nearing the end of the current one. Next year will be the last year of the current cycle. There's some projects that are definite priorities. We know the High Street Viaduct, we really need to be thinking on that, and I know there's, I believe, a $5 million grant opportunity that you're looking at, and then there's other larger ones, too, so that'll definitely be a high priority, as well as getting the West Edgewood and Stadium Corridor intersection improvements actually constructed, doing the engineering now, where possibly do some construction in the early parts of the next sales tax cycle. And then the South Side, Old Munichburg area, which I just showed the picture of, making those improvements, tying that all up to the Madison Street corridor. So again, another picture, we've seen this before. This is the current idea or design for what the High Street Viaduct will look like, making that an aggregate intersection with Missouri Boulevard on High Street with a roundabout is the current design. The bridge actually becomes a lot shorter, saves some money on the bridge construction by doing this, and then also get better access right there by making it an aggregate intersection. And then this is the study results from 10 years ago of the Edgewood corridor with Stadium and Creek Trail, and engineering company's working on that project right now, and will look at this design. It may look like this, it may look completely different, we don't know, but they're gonna do that process to identify the traffic patterns and make sure that, you know, the lane configurations and everything is correct. I just showed you this one, just to reiterate, as we begin the new parts of the next sales tax, we'll definitely be picking up some of these areas around Madison and tying all that together. They are in definite need of repair, that whole neighborhood in Jefferson, Madison, and Monroe, maybe to a little bit lesser extent, there's some pretty major thoroughfares, and definitely wanna fix those areas up. Didn't show an area, right, I don't know, you can't really see it on the Jefferson going, you know, towards 54 there, crossing over the bridge there. Kyle, you're doing an overlay on that this year.
Right, this year, this year there'll be an overlay on that section of it, so.
And that curb and gutter and sidewalk is newer, so I'm not really even able to rebuild with that, but an overlay through that whole area. And then we've been working on, Kyle and I, and then other, other, other people have been working on trying to prioritize and figure out what are the next projects in the sales tax, the next cycle. So we wanna identify a large list and prioritize those, be flexible, the economic development opportunities and possible changes in priorities, and more or less, we're thinking of this as a public works improvements menu. So list of projects, prioritize, and then start to build these as they become, you know, high on the list as far as needed improvement. So Kyle will go through some general projects that we've seen to be priorities going forward.
Right, so this first one we're showing here is East Dunklin Street, really from, it says Clark to Jefferson to Clark, but, you know, Clark to, to really Madison Street, that we all drive through there, we know how it lies, we know what that concrete is, and there's ADA improvements that are necessary to do there along with some potential storm, stormwater improvements, but, you know, this corridor, especially, excuse me, being right along Lincoln University, you know, pretty, pretty high-profile corridor as it leads to Munichburg, so I think getting that street approved and riding a lot better makes our city and county look a whole lot better running through there.
And with Lincoln, with their new building there right on the corner of the interchange, they're making a side more investment into their campus, and this will complement that well.
Right. And then, you know, I will say with that, with that, too, along with Lincoln University, who are, if you drive along Lafayette, running through there, Lafayette is in Big Neen, it's gonna be a pain for us as we go through this winter time, but we're looking at near, probably next year overlay on Lafayette, because it's needed badly, and that's a city overlay that will take care of that, and will kinda take care of that side of Lincoln University as it runs to Jeff City High School. Next one, on Eric's slide show here is East High Street, Adams to Lafayette. That corridor through there is a much-needed, is much-needed for a revamp. It needs improvement, kinda like Capital's been approved above it. There's also a lot of surrounding streets, talking Adams, Jackson, and Marshall that tie into it, and if you look at, especially Jackson and Marshall Street, there's, there's a lot of TLC that needs to go into the road, those roads as well. So trying to potentially, you know, improve, as we're improving, East High Street here, the desire would be to look at pairing asphalt, street overlays kinda with, with those projects and inclusive with those projects, so kinda get a bigger, bigger bang for the buck is the hope. Again, this is a, this is a shot at Jackson Street, and kinda what we're showing here is we have applied for a TAP grant, Transportation Alternative Projects Grant, to help extend kinda the Greenway Trail, you know, from McCarty to Capitol, and so with that, with that project, obviously, we would like to work on the street as well and not, not just be a nice trail that gets done and have a, have an ugly road sitting, sitting there with it. So really, the cooperative part here would be the investment in the road.
We can leverage city-county funds with potentially MODOT funds to get a lot of in your project, and at the same time, as you do the side path or sidewalk through there, you're having to improve curb and gutter, so we can use some of those cap funds to improve curb and gutter and then add to that with pavement improvements.
Right, right. Truman Scott Station intersection, this is, again, this is, we're showing a mock-up of a roundabout here. That's not necessarily what it, what it may end up being, but there's some intersection improvements, some intersection control improvements that are needed at Truman and Scott Station, and Eric, I believe you guys, further down Scott Station are.
Kind of upgrade on Scott Station route to potentially curb and gutter and some widening, and we've seen growth out in the north of town along that corridor, so improving the intersection is definitely a big project.
Next one, like the last one, Ellison Lorenzo Green, another intersection that is in need of improvement, we believe, to handle the traffic running through there. There is a current signal through here, so we do believe that probably a roundabout here would work well, so it's kind of what we're showing. Next on the list is Miller Street Box Culvert, and, you know, I wanted this on the list, and obviously down below in red says potential cooperative project with MODOT. I believe that, that has to happen for, for this project to occur. There's a very, very large box culvert that, that kinda runs underneath the, I guess, the south edge of the highway and the north edge of Miller Street, and if anything should happen to that box culvert, we got big time problems, obviously, with the highway and kinda subsequently with Miller Street, and it's on both city and MODOT runway as it runs through there, so we have discussed this issue with MODOT, so we're, we would like to just kinda beat the drum on this, on this issue, because we see that box culvert as a, as a major issue that's gonna have to be addressed, and hopefully our friends over at MODOT can, can help us find some, find some funds to address it, or for them to address it, that'd be even better. Next, Mission Drive Extension. The next two are really, need to be development-driven. These are, this is extending Mission Drive all the way to, to the new Wildwood, and, you know, if, if development occurs, if there is some kinda residential or some kind of other economic development driver, then, then this project and the next one on militia, you know, could occur. So again, militia drive here, the militia drive extension, kinda the same commentary on it, it really needs some economic, economic development to drive it, press before, before any investment in, in the road can occur. And kind of our, our view at the, at the city is that, is that there's so much need that we have in our roadway system, I mean, it's, it's really been underfunded for, for years in our roadway system, our existing roadway system, that it makes it difficult to invest in, in new before, you know, unless there's that drive involved.
With projects like this, we need to make sure that we're out in front and have, have a rough plan of where this road would go. That way, we're prepared when a developer comes in and says, hey, we're gonna do something here. What can the city and county do? We need to be able to.
It shows, it shows that vision that's needed to have that discussion and say, hey, yes, we would. This is an area that we would like to come through. They are invested and they do have a vision, and, you know, that gives them confidence to come here. Other projects, as Eric mentioned earlier about the menu, this is just kind of a menu of potential projects. You know, there's, there's nothing, you know, in concrete on these potential projects, but, you know, Eric and I and Eric's team, Matt, Matt over there, and the rest of the public work staff at the county and city, obviously David Lanning and John Fitch with myself, we're, we are working together on, on these other potential items. You know, as, as funding allows, obviously, we have more projects than we do funding, and so the projects that we just went over, I mean, yeah, we would love to do those projects and say, yes, that those are going to for sure happen, but, you know, obviously with, with even the viaduct, you see the, the money difference. I mean, it's gonna take a lot of, a lot of money for some potential projects. There are some others that, that may, may fit the money that we have at the time, so having that menu, having, having this menu and progressing with this menu is essential so we can apply funds that we do have for, for other needed improvements. So, you know, we can run through these if we have time, if not, we can move on.
We can move on. If you have certain questions, we can get to that towards the end. So here's where we're at now. So the current sales tax cycle, like I said, it ends in 2026, end of next year, and we have been working on different options for what this next cycle was, will look like, and the 10-year sunset option has, has been put at the top as the preferred. I know the city's public work and planning committee, they've, they've looked at it and recommended it, and we've visited with our Road and Bridge Advisory Board, too, and they've recommended it as well. So, you know, we've kicked around different options, too, like a no sunset, but now is probably not the time to pursue that. The 10-year, we feel that it would be successful, of course, and it's needed. The five-year, to try to plan projects over a five-year period can be challenging, and it just seems like nowadays, there's so many more items that, that you have to plan for and a lot of regulatory with the core engineers and all that.
It seems like it takes about three years of, of work and getting the clearances necessary before you can actually get to, get to doing anything, so.
And then, and if you match some, some MODOT funds, for whatever reason, those also have a lot of hoops you gotta jump, jump through. So a five-year cycle, this is challenging for us to be able to deliver projects and, you know, feel comfortable with, with what we're doing. A 10-year definitely makes it a lot more, I wouldn't say easier, but it also gives us time to plan and be able to do this right, so that's what we're looking at. And if, if we look at, you know, the county side of it, you know, what our budget projections would look like for a 10-year, you can't see this here, I'll blow it up on the next one, but just some funding percentages if we, if we lay that in there, and of course, this would have to be approved by the county commission, but you can see where some priorities are. The city-county cooperative definitely is a priority. We're really gonna focus on resurfacing the concrete street replacement. We really need to take care of what we have. As Kyle mentioned, you know, they're looking at the same thing, so that seems to be the highest priority, is making sure we're, we're keeping good roads in good shape and fixing the ones that are in poor shape. But then we also have to, you know, be able to be, can't think of the word, but we need to be able to be proactive in development, new development, facilitate, you know, growth that's happening in town. So there's a lot of different factors that roll into this. Again, you got the 85% is Road and Bridge, 15% county facility equipment improvements. If you look at just the Road and Bridge side, half of that pie chart is just taking care of what we have, so it's extremely important that we have the sales tax. Without that, people have asked me, what happens, and I say, we're out of business. We can't continue to do what we're doing, taking care of the roads that the citizens expect without having the sales tax, so we definitely need to make sure we're doing the right thing, and we can continue that on into the future. And so where we're at now, so we'll keep on working on this menu, this project's menu, and get that into a very workable form, put some dollar amounts to each project, so we kinda know what we're looking at as far as what we think we can do over, if it is a 10-year sunset, what we can do over that period. We've discussed this, Kyle and I, and we feel the 10-year is definitely the way to go right now. And for, for the county, that'll be in, on the ballot, just going on. Traditionally, it's been in, in April of the year before, so next April, the county would have to vote on that, and then Jeff City, they would vote in August, so that's, that's where we're at, and I think, you know, we would, we would entertain or be interested if the county commission supports this 10-year sunset, and would like to proceed with, with that concept moving forward, so. Any questions, comments?
Since I serve on the Road and Bridge Advisory, I, you know, the last meeting we had, the group voted to bring it to the commission to endorse the 10-year approach. I think it's probably a reasonable approach, but we mean, eight times we've gone to the county, the citizens, and said, how about five years, and for eight times, they've said yes by almost an 80/20 majority, and to hear the engineers talk about how tough it is to put some of these contracts and projects together in a five-year period, and the five year seems to go like a snap, it makes sense to go to the 10. In another world, maybe the no sunset, but no sunset does have some drawbacks. You lose accountability perhaps in no sunset, so I'm, I'm in favor of us to proceed with your planned 10-year. I already voted once and Road and Bridge Viaduct, so now it's here.
And again, we need to stress to the citizens of Cole County and Jefferson City, this is a continuation of sales tax. It's not a new tax, so we're just continuing it, and, you know, we're gonna make improvements, so.
Yeah, we voted on it today, you know, with the 10-year?
I think that'd be great if you would want to do that.
And as always, we never spend taxpayer dollars on the, the information, anything to do with the vote. The campaign is gonna be run independently of the governmental entities here, so, and I, but I know that there's been some discussion about, you know, who's gonna get out there and, and do the work. Well, it's not really one of us, or on our time, our government time, it's on somebody else's volunteer time to do this, as always. I'll make a motion, are we looking for a motion here today?
Yes, the board or endorse the 10-years, that's it.
I would make a motion that the county commission endorse the 10-year renewal of the capital-proven sales tax.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You have a deal.
Public hearing for setting 2025 tax levy. We will open up the, our meeting to anyone from the public that would like to speak on our tax levy.
The only thing I'll say is, we talked about it last week, and we talked, we had the new values from the county clerk's office, from the assessor's office, and the 5% that went on to the value, it did change our levies. They, they both are dropping the levy, and that's due to the increase of the assessed value, coming back down to the cost of living index that the state auditor's formula comes up with. So there's two components, the rate and then the assessed value. So the rates themselves are coming down, but the assessed value is going up, so in turn, you take that new rate times the new assessed value, and it is going to generate a little bit more than 5% more. The assessed value did go up 6.9% from last year's assessed value to this year's assessed value, but the overall money, again, if all taxpayers paid on time, it would be a 5.4% increase. When I look at it, I just look at Public Works, right, because Public Works doesn't have that rollback stipulation within their tax levy. So again, a lot of that is due to new construction and personal property increase, and I think Harry's got some more detailed information that he. And I think Harry's got some more detailed information that he's talked about.
I could pass on a few more statistics. That the assessed value of the county as a whole has gone up 6.94% from a year ago, from 2024 to 2025. New construction is a little over 1% of that 6.94. Personal property increases, 1.564, so over 1 and 1/2% of the increase of the 6.94 increase is due to personal property being bigger. There's, there was some reassessment by the county assessor, especially in townships nine, 10, and 14. But then the BOE came along under the orders of the State Tax Commission and made increases in the other townships that were not hit by the assessor. So when we talk about road and bridge, oh, here's the other thing, is the state state law says, hey, you can go up, your assessed value can go up by this consumer price index, the CPI, which is 2.9%. That 6.94, when you pull out the new construction, you pull out the personal property increases, those, the taxing authorities did. But then they have to back down, and to the extent they exceed 2.9%, which is the CPI, that causes a rollback of the levy. So our road and bridge levy is going to experience about a 1.146, somewhere, 1.4, 1.4, 1.14 reduction in the levy rate. Now, the one that gets complicated is the emergency EMS, because when that was adopted years ago, the the plan, and it's always been executed this way, is that to the extent that sales tax is collected for EMS, 60% of what is collected filters back to a reduction in our general levy. We give 60% of the sales tax collected back to the citizens of the county. And there's always an estimate that has to be done at this time of year as to what that sales tax is going to be. And the statute's very clear, the sales tax you use in that calculation is what it was for the first six months of the current year, times two. Well, it never comes out to be times two, the second half of the year, the second half of the year, what was depleted or reduced. And therefore, you can't use the same rollback percentage on the on the general levy as we can on the road and bridge levy. But as a matter of fact, the, you know, we talked about the general levy, it actually pops up just a little bit.
It does.
It pops up just a little bit, and it's because the first six months of sales tax last year were quite a bit more than the sales tax, the last six months of last year. But the statute says, when you estimate, you just take the first six times two.
Right. And you adjust the last year's, yes, and the next year.
So did you, do we do it in two pieces, the road and bridge first?
Yes. If you guys are okay with closing the hearing, then you can vote on each one of those separate. If there's any other questions and anybody has.
Yeah, would there be anybody needing to speak? After Harry threw that off, I don't know what anybody would add.
If not, then I would, I would close the public hearing. Do we need a vote on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion that we set the levy for road and bridge at .2751. And just for reference purposes, the prior year levy was .2783.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion to set the general levy at .0706. And the prior year levy was, do I have it here? 0462, prior year, .30706, for next year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. We'll go to the MoDOT program order grant. Sheriff?
So this is a grant that we've had through MoDOT to help enforce construction zone areas. We've been having some issues with barricades being moved and stuff like that. So the first, this is the agreement from the Missouri Highway Transportation Commission. And then the second one is the actual work zone program order. It's only for, it's only for $1,500. They are going to increase that presumably to 3,000. When that comes, I will bring that document back to you. But once we hit this sign and send it over, then we'll be able to start doing some direct enforcement in that area of the construction.
Will you do this with a resolution or a not a resolution, court order? Is this going to be a court order later on, or we just, because this isn't the application, we're actually accepting the?
Then I'll do a court order.
Aye.
I'll do a court order afterwards, soon as I, yes, definitely. If it's been awarded and we're getting the money and we hadn't planned on it to begin with, we will do a court order.
And a court order, if you just want to do 15 grand, that would be?
No, I hear 15.
Oh, okay. All right. It's going to up my budget a little bit.
So do we do this before the court order, or we?
You can.
Also, we'll make a motion to accept the work zone program order to on-call work zone enforcement program.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All three of you have to sign. I tried to mark it on there, so thank you.
Discussion of irrigation for the annex lawn.
Actually, it should have been put under bids and contracts because it's on this year's capital budget. We moved it over from last year's money, replaced the irrigation out front that was been abandoned for years, and then put new sod down to clean that all up and make it look nice again. Capital, we had, I think, either 6,500 or 7,500, and it's projects a little under 5,000. So we keep it under budget. I do have contracts, Jill has reviewed them. Lawn installation is 1650, and irrigation is 2,900.
It seems like a lot for that size lawn, but it is ugly today. It's embarrassing.
And then with the, with very water and replacing our water line next week, we'll get to schedule that, get it all cleaned up and make it look nice.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we proceed with the irrigation for the annex lawn project. All in one?
Yes.
Contract?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bits and contracts, approval and signing of MDFB tax credit disbursement request from the soccer club.
Jill, did you print that out?
I did. I thought Luke might be here.
And this is the second request, so.
This is for dispersment of the tax credits from Missouri Development Finance Board. It's the second one. You signed this previous one. And so the County Commission has to authorize that this third.
I think it's 9,500.
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve and sign the Missouri Development Finance Board tax credit disbursement request for the soccer, request from the soccer club. And it was 9,500, you said? 9,500.
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just going to agree.
Okay, approval and signing of MediaCom internet service for the health department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we've been going through reviewing our communication expenses, and we tried to eliminate the internet service that's out the health department and swing them over to the counties. But I think the the health director will agree that it slowed them down to a standstill almost by doing that. So we're going to have to put a alternate service in out there. We did, we we got them running on the limited connection right now, but it's running about 750, 800 dollars a month. And this new connection's going to run about 149.95 a month, 140 dollars and 95 cents a month. And it's a month-to-month contract. And this is the same service that we put in over recently over at the sheriff's office. And so, and I had Jill look at the contract, and she thought it looked okay. So I would just ask that it would be approved so I can get that, get that amount down.
Just to inquire, there were others considered besides MediaCom?
Yeah, so I went through, and I don't know if I'm going to go through and name all the names and stuff like that, but but I did go through, and I looked at alternate services across the board and for the, when you're, basically, when you're evaluating internet service, you're looking at bandwidth and cost and then what that brings to the table. And so when I went through and evaluated among the different providers, MediaCom came in at this, at 149.95, which is a super aggressive price for the amount of bandwidth that they're going to be getting. So, and then in today's computer climate, where most, a lot of applications are hosted and where internet service is critical as far as the amount of speed they get, then this seems to be the best option.
We appreciate Brian doing this. I mean, we want, obviously, to save the county money, but also with our electronic health records being posted on the web and the other services we do, like MoWINS, the the WIC program that they use through DHS and in PROD for birth industry, because we have to have internet, reliable, quick, fast internet, so. But we appreciate Brian looking into it.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the MediaCom internet service for the health department.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you. I know I've been irritating you a lot about that, but we made a, we made some changes.
Okay. Approval and signing of Mo Blue Shield Grant Program application.
So this was a part of the Blue Shield program that we're part, that we were accepted into. This is the grant process. We're putting in five MDTs, three radios, and a pole cam, a total of 52,406 dollars. So we'd ask that you approve that so we can order them.
What's an MDT?
Mobile data terminal. It's a computer, and it's sad that I'm ordering five of the MDTs, and it's the same cost as three portable radios. Shows you how expensive the radios are. This, and this was approved by Brian.
We'll have to talk again.
I'm going to, I'm going to get a, I'm going to get a stamp.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the Missouri Blue Shield Grant Program application.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval of off-system ridge program, the BRO supplemental agreement for the Sturbridge Road.
So this supplemental agreement is with MoDOT. The BRO funding we will receive for this is roughly 340,000. And the supplemental is a six-month time extension to the original agreement that was approved by the commission on August 8 of 2023. And it will be sent to you electronically.
I've already received it. I had to wait for my fellow commissioners to approve it before I could sign it.
So.
Is there one on the left side?
Yes.
I'll let you know.
Make a motion to approve, approval of the off-system ridge program supplemental agreement on the Sturbridge Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now I can sign it. Okay. Approval and signing of a contract with the YMCA for EMS physical fitness program.
Morning.
Morning.
So I know the last time we talked about this, this discussion kind of took a bunch of different roads, and we've kind of gone back to the drawing board, and I'll just give some background on this for our agency. So talking about the need for physical fitness, there was a study conducted by the National Association of EMTs that looked at 12 different agencies across the country and some of the injury data. They concluded that EMS professionals are seven times more likely than the average worker to miss work as a result of an injury, and one out of four EMS practitioners will suffer a career-ending injury within the first four years of service. EMS personnel also experience an elevated risk for obesity, coronary heart disease, and poor cardio-respiratory fitness. Furthermore, occupational mental health hazards stemming in part from altered sleep schedules and high work-stress burnout have been shown to affect overall health. And when we talk about some of the barriers to improving those things, EMS personnel were interviewed at each one of those 12 organizations stemming from large metropolitan fire departments through private organizations to county-based systems such as ours. Most common reported obstacles were a lack of resources, such as equipment and space for exercise, lack of knowledge and proper implementation of a program for healthier living, work demands that cause scheduling issues surrounding sleep deprivation, and the interference with the ability to follow normal exercise and healthy habit routines, lack of healthy eating options inside and outside of the station due to call volume and pace, and then low motivation to begin and stick with healthy lifestyle change programs. So this was something that was driven from our operational steering committee. We have a group of our line-level folks who get together and have two-way communications with our leadership about what the crews and what our workforce is is desiring. And one of the first topics addressed by that committee was the lack of abilities to have physical fitness and and access to equipment while on duty. So that kind of led into many different conversations about gym memberships and how we can support and all of these sorts of things. And based on the feedback, the last time, you know, gym memberships kind of opened up a wide range of of rabbit holes to go down. So we really went back to the drawing board and focused on how can we provide access to physical fitness equipment for folks while they are on duty? We know that infrastructure-wise, we don't necessarily have the facilities or the equipment at this time. We are certainly looking at how to address that in in future projects, whether it's building out space at Adam Street with the remodel at South Ridge that could be pending next year, and some of our outside stations. That's certainly things that we will incorporate. But how do we address the the here and now? So hearing our problem, the YMCA reached out to us. They've offered a solution that is tied to our folks while they are on duty, which allows them to use all of the YMCA facilities at a discounted rate for our agency. So again, this is not a membership to the YMCA. This is strictly so that they can go and work out while while they are on duty. On the operational side, we have already looked at implementing policies to make sure that we can get folks rotated through, we maintain coverage, and that they get the benefit of doing that. So once we go down this road, it will be an expectation that they use it and that we are not just pumping money into this for for no, no results. But I think this is a good short-term solution to a problem that we can address through other projects in the future. So the the price is $800 a month, which is basically $100 per crew, which is the equivalent per crew, which is the equivalent of two family memberships for the two members that are on that truck. But, again, anybody within our agency who is on duty can go and use those facilities. The YMCA offers us some good options, that they have multiple facilities kind of spread out throughout the county so we can kind of maintain our coverage footprint rather than just using one facility. So, just asking that we signed the contract today and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Will this be voluntary for our EMS personnel or is it going to be mandatory or?
So, so the way that I have structured it, it is that they will be expected to participate while they are on duty.
Are you going to do any kind of reassessment, reassessments and keeping up to see what improvements they're making, what they're, what we're doing with it?
I, I think that is something that we've talked about internally. I think we need to know a little bit more about which direction we want to go as an organization and which way the county wants to go. Ultimately, I've had a lot of desire and expression from our folks that they want to see minimum physical standards implemented and that we test those annually. I think that's something that as the organizational leader, I need to evaluate a little bit more and understand the potential impacts of that. But yes, to go down that road, that is not something that is off the table. I just need to wrap my mind around that a little bit more.
Well, we talked about it a little before the meeting too and very much same place I was when we talked about this a few months ago, that we were looking at trying to possibly do some exercise equipment and make our own gym. And I appreciate the YMCA reaching out after that meeting and you looking at some other solutions and trying to be creative. But I'm still, I'm still against this solution to it. I think there are other ways. I think you sent us an email with the National EMT Association and a lot of that was associated with actual exercises and cardio stuff that not necessarily requires a lot of weight equipment that you can do with dumbbells and stuff. And I feel like we could use this eight-hundred dollars a month in different ways to, you know, possibly do that. I mean, they mentioned even, you know, weight loss, different ways to exercise. I think there were five general moves or motions and stuff, so.
If you, we've got Architects Alliance going to look at South Ridge. So, can we kind of design a fitness space into that, those plans and maybe, you know, for right now, approve this, but with the understanding that, you know, this is roughly ten thousand a year, that once we get that, we start purchasing equipment and have our own fitness.
Yeah, I, I think definitely, you know, some of the, the projects that we had, there's space in Adam Street where we can put in a smaller facility that's, you know, probably designed to house, you know, maybe four people at a time. But yes, putting in a bigger facility at South Ridge, that's already something, when we look at the footprint of the building and some of the areas that we vacated, that probably moves to kind of the top of the list for, for one of the things that we want to look at for that facility as well. And that will be one-hundred percent the goal is to use this as a bridge until we can bring those things in-house because obviously bringing those things in-house, it not only is a monetary bonus, but operationally allows us for a lot more flexibility to have it at our own facility. So, yes, one-hundred percent, and that is the goal to really use this as a bridge until we can accomplish a measurable program in-house.
In the agreement, excuse me, with the Y is month-to-month.
Yes.
I mean, you could, we could pull the trigger.
Yes.
Given those statistics that you read, there's no doubt that your crew operates so much different than the rest of the county employees. And because of those stats, I, I think we should go forward with this until we, use it as a bridge.
Yes.
I would ask that you feed back to us, which station is winning?
Sure.
The attendance award and who isn't? Because they need to be shamed if they're not. They may be, whatever. There's a way to do that, you know? Get a, get contests going, who's got the perfect attendance award? So.
I mean, honestly, do it county-wide then if we're going to do this and have accessibility for everybody. Why, I don't, I still don't understand why we're doing it just for EMS. If we're going to do this eight-hundred dollars a month to give them access, the sheriff's got a spot, give him eight-hundred dollars a month for them to be able to go use their gym. So, throw you on the spot there, Sheriff.
Yeah, it's not possible, but.
For, because it's in this secure area.
Well, there's, there's a couple of things. We have training down there, so anytime we have training, no one's allowed to work out. It's a secure area, so it'd be, having access to it on a regular basis will be somewhat difficult.
You're going to spend eight-hundred dollars a month and let's build something over at Shepherd's. We got some room over there to, to put some workout equipment in there to do county-wide. It's not just EMS. It probably has some, hell, I've got all kinds of things, exercises, stuff I can do. I mean, they're sitting in a file that's probably got more invest on it than anybody else's files, but there's other stuff you can do without having to go to a gym. I mean, we're not even talking about equipment. You can walk, you can do steps. I mean, you can, you can plank, you can do that in full EMT gear. I'm saying this is probably county-wide, we really need to look at it, trying to address health issues. So.
I would, I said, you know, when I started my comments, I, your people live a different life. Back-to-back twenty-four-hour shifts, forty-eight hours worked or considered work within forty-eight hours. And so, because we have, we should do something for those special kinds of folks. That doesn't mean we have to do it for everybody because you are so different.
They got five days off, they can go do their exercise.
I would just bring up too, his, his staffing is, are prone, more prone to workers' comp claims because of issues just like this, so, as well as us. So, that's one of the reasons why the fire department and police departments across the nation have started this type of activity, to try to reduce some of the workers' comp claims. I think one of the, one of the selfish things, and it can be viewed that way, is there is a higher propensity to suffer a major or line-of-duty death in, in the profession that we do. And one of the things that happens when, when those issues unfortunately occur is that NIOSH is going to come in and do an investigation. And we have to be able to stand up and say that we have policies and procedures and the ability to support these people and we are not negligent in those sorts of things. And when I look at our system currently, it would be hard for us to, to answer some of those questions and selfishly, but also to, to advocate for my people from, to avoid from suffering those, those sorts of very bad things. I think this is necessary.
You got a statistic, I think, one of four?
Yeah.
What was the one of four statistic?
So, one, one out of every four EMS professionals will suffer a career-ending injury in the first four years of service.
Statistics are what they are. It's just whatever. I mean, yeah, you're, you're doing more physical stuff than maybe some other people county-wide, but you're also expected to have yourself prepared to do that job. So, I feel like that is, that's kind of on each person to be able to do that.
I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. This is just.
Maintenance guys, I mean, we make them carry reams of paper up here. They could cut their backs a little. Probably should start getting you all to work out too. I doubtfully will die from a paper cut sitting at my desk. So, I understand where that stat is going to be a skewed stat, but if you're going to do this, let everybody have the opportunity to do it. I mean, I got probably more chance of being overweight and having issues with that than getting a back injury, so.
I'm not lifting a three-hundred or four-hundred pound person. I'm not carrying all this equipment up, planks of steps. I'm not, you know, what they do, what we do.
We've, we've got steps at Shepherd's that you can walk up and down that equipment and do that, that exact workout. Look on that, the thing that he sent us. There's five general primary movements or something, and you can practice that with dumbbells or you can do it with a can of oil. And that sounds stupid, but, you know, Kathy had her shoulder surgery. She had to do exercises. We didn't have to get a gym membership to do the workout or to, to work out. Use what's available.
Usually, you'll do physical therapy, so.
And I, and I will say.
She did at home with literally a can of oil that was sent in the box from some other stuff that was going on. And not because I was too tight to buy a gym membership. I mean, I'm not going to go, but if she wants to, by all means.
I, I agree with you there. And, and I have personally witnessed our folks using some of those improvised statistics. You know, I got a call from one of the fire chiefs from a station that we, that we occupy in the county, and they were very curious of what this farm tractor tire was doing in their station. Well, that was something that our folks were using to improvise how to work out. So, they are doing it. People are using their own gym memberships to accomplish this while on duty. But they have come to us asking for a more professional, more formalized approach, and that's what we are trying to do.
I would be good using this as stopgap until we can design a fitness space, you know, in South Ridge, and then we purchase the equipment and we set up our own fitness center. So, I couldn't do what your people do. Of course, I'm old and feeble, but I couldn't do that.
I'll make a motion to sign a contract with YMCA on a month-to-month basis for eight-hundred dollars a month to provide for facilities of our EMS employees. And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Almost tricked me in there. Thanks, Chief. I told you I wouldn't make too much of a stink, and I might have fibbed a little. I was trying not to. They didn't wear me down enough before they got to you. We had to get the end and everything.
We got the party at the end, okay? Unfinished business is discussion of the circuit court budget. I think we talked to our judges and they're kind of okay with whatever we want to do. I don't know, what, what do we need to discuss?
I, I think there was, there was a question out there, is could we adopt it except for the variable COLA to be determined?
Salaries was, I think, kind of the only part that we had.
Right, yeah. So, but was there something besides the COLA on the salaries or the other salaries or have we decided?
Juvenile had some requests.
I had four adjustments. One for the lead attorney that was approved when we hired him back in June through the email thread, but it wouldn't come up until the January budget. And then the adjustment of the second attorney, adjustment of the chief deputy juvenile officer, and adjustment of the superintendent. So, I had four adjustments. It should be noted, that's a reallocation of a vacancy that we were willing to leave vacant. So, it's not additional money in the budget, it's just reallocation of money. And the budget, and the position is currently sitting vacant, so we could technically make all of those adjustments now, but given historically, we had discussed not making mid-budget cycle adjustments, we were waiting until the first of the year to implement that.
That wouldn't actually not affect your budget though, was it?
It does not, it doesn't.
The number was good.
Maybe even to the good, I think it was. Wasn't that just kind of?
I believe it actually.
After all the dust has settled on the former employees gone, new employees in, modification of duties and so on, at the end of all, the bottom line was smaller, wasn't it? Cost wise?
I believe approximately four thousand when you take in the total funding for the deputy juvenile officer position and then the adjustments. I believe in totality about four thousand less, I think.
Yeah, that's my recollection. I didn't have the number committed in memory, but I thought it was at the end of the day. Less.
And then there was the, the pre-trial services had the proposed tenure adjustment that the state had adopted.
And I spoke in opposition to that, and I would still be there in opposition to that today.
I think the judge actually talked to us, each individual, and said that they were okay with going based on whatever the kind of COLA or whatever we decide. So, unless you heard different, I think we kind of had it settled that we were, their adjustments would be the same as, now Toby's, I'm not sure how we want to do that if we, it's not changing the budget, it may be to the better. I've got your other email that you sent after the meeting and stuff. It doesn't have that bottom dollar, but I thought when we talked about it, it was the same, two bottom dollars same. Did you look at those there?
Well, it's kind of what the Health Department did. They were willing to give up an FT to get that adjustment they did last week. It's kind of what Toby's willing to go down to twenty-nine EFT full-time positions to get those adjustments. One of those actually already was approved, so it's just the three adjustments. So, it's up to you what your philosophy is, giving up a position to move that, you know, around, but you did do that for the Health Department.
And we did, going back to Ralph Jobbs, I think.
Last week, ours was not an increase.
I gotta pay for them, that wasn't an increase, Kristy.
Well, she, but she moved into an EMT position and that was the salary. She got promoted, but all in all, her position was decreased, so in total, it was decreased to our budget.
And you gave up an FT.
Half of an FT.
I don't know what half of an FT is.
She moved her department.
And I'm not going out here, so that's, I would make a motion to adopt a budget as presented last week, except for the COLA to be determined by what the county adopts as the overall COLA. And no additional monies for the proposed one percent for two-year.
Yeah, something like that, yeah. Up to ten, yeah.
That's my motion.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and second for discussion. This still keeps Toby's budget whole. And then we can, if we're going to change some positions around and stuff and then make adjustments, that's not going to be a problem with what we're approving here, right?
Right.
Okay. So, to make sure that worked out for you, because I think we're all on the same page with the Juvenile there too, so.
Toby is also ahead of the curve on job description reviews and annual performance reviews. They've already been turned in.
Teacher's pet.
Well, last year when I came, it was necessary, and so I was just trying to have my ducks in a row.
Yeah, you're ahead of it. I'm late to the last minute like I do.
Okay, do we have any other discussion? We have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Boy, we just zipped right through that, so I would entertain a motion to go into closing. session.
Make a motion, let's see, under closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the Missouri, the Commission will go into closed session to discuss legal actions under 610.021 subsection 1.
Second, go call please.
Sam.
Yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Yes.
Harry, are you leaving?